Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. I call this the session here. Yep. As always, thank you all so much for coming. Perfect, how are you guys? So, thank you so much for, um... This is my voice a little bit. Sorry, guys, I need to make my voice up yesterday, so just FYI. Um, thank you so much for coming. This is the, uh, to get to advancing equity and rezoning, which is a major update to our, uh, blueprint Denver, um, comprehensive plan. Today is the third and final session to really hope to bring some big pieces together. The team is going to be proposing the update to the review process criteria and make significant strides at sharing equitable outcomes in the time of rezoning efforts. We look forward to your ideas as supplemental book proposals. We are also hoping to confirm your support so we can keep on our timeline, which is to issue this, the text amendment to the planning board and city council before the year's end. The timeline would be an opportunity for the public to then provide feedback on this and which we've incorporated for the last year. So I'll turn it over to the project team at this point. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Manish. Um, and thank you all for being here. Um, as you know, my name is Rob Higgin, I'm a member of the, um, the project team. Um, and I've got Brandon with me who will kind of take over, uh, the second half of this presentation. Um, so, uh, just to go over the agenda really quick, we'll start with a quick recap to tie into where we left off back in April, uh, our last joint session. Um, then we'll provide an overview of our proposal, including the things we've already discussed uh, in our previous meetings, uh, the review criteria. Um, and then after a quick pause there for discussion and questions, I'll hand it over to Brandon, uh, and he'll review, um, the commitments and equitable outcomes uh, of the project before, uh, before we have another opportunity for, uh, for discussion and comments and questions. Um, so back in April, uh, we brought an updated proposal of these review criteria um, and walked away with some general agreement on a few things. First, the removal of uniformity of district regulations, uh, the removal of the, uh, the Denver zoning code purpose and intent statements. Um, and also, um, the, uh, concept that we're going to retain this, uh, this provision for, uh, for rezoning that provides land for, um, a need that was not anticipated at the time of plan adoption. Uh, we did not end, uh, those meetings with any consensus, um, about, uh, how to address the issue with the public health, safety, and general welfare language in that criteria. Um, so now we'll shift gears and talk through, um, our current proposal. Again, some of this will be a recap, um, and we'll stop to highlight some of the new pieces of this draft proposal. So as a quick reminder of our starting point, these are our current rezoning criteria. So all rezonings must be consistent with these first three criteria that constitute adopted plans, uniformity of district regulations, and the public health, safety, and general welfare. Um, and secondly, non-legislative or applicant-driven rezonings must also have a justifying circumstance and be consistent with the neighborhood context, zone, district, purpose, and intent statements. Um, and the next few slides will review which criteria we're keeping, which we're removing, and which we're changing. Um, so first and foremost, we are keeping the criteria, um, uh, that requires rezonings to be consistent with our adopted plans. Uh, this is where most of the equitable engagement occurs. This is where the community has the most effective way to articulate what they, uh, their vision for, uh, for the neighborhoods and the city as a whole. We are, uh, going to clarify a portion of that criterion, um, and, uh, address how we will, um, uh, address the provision for community, community need not anticipated at the time of plan adoption. Um, so this provision is currently embedded in the adopted plan consistency criterion. Uh, we're proposing to create an exception, uh, to the, uh, uh, plan consistency criterion to houses provision. Uh, we're proposing this, um, uh, in order to, have, rather than creating a separate criterion on its own, um, as we have previously discussed, uh, and this will emphasize the, the real paramount importance of the adopted plan consistency, uh, criterion and communicate that rezonings that do use this provision are, are really rare. Uh, and they're, this can only move forward with a really narrow path, um, similar to as it does today. Uh, so we are removing the uniformity of district regulations criterion, the consistency with neighborhood context descriptions, zone district purpose, and intent statements criterion, and the justifying circumstances criterion as exists today. Uh, finally, the, the big change for, for this meeting, we're proposing to change the language of the public health, safety, and general welfare criterion to create a public interest criterion. Uh, this criterion will be evaluated, uh, very similarly to the, to the current public health, safety, and general welfare criterion, uh, but begins to separate the language in our code from the exclusionary and racist history of the public health, safety, and general welfare and how it was used, um, uh, in the past. Uh, this criterion will also help act as a test to ensure that all rezonings, um, are made in the public interest.
And just as a reminder, if you have questions, you can queue me and I'm keeping track of it.
Thank you. Uh, so, so during the last, uh, sessions, we heard the desire to retain, um... I flipped these. Try and flip it to the next one. Uh, thank you, and then we'll go back. Okay, so during the last sessions, we heard a desire to retain this additional criteria that would be evaluated alongside adopted plan guidance. Uh, the proposed change from public health, safety, and general welfare to public interest takes a step away from that problematic path of this language. Um, so, uh, if you could, so why do we, uh, select this specific language, public interest? Well, really, we're, we're trying to create a criterion that acts similarly to public health, safety, and general welfare without using that exact language. Uh, public interest is an understood term in the Denver zoning code and has a similar definition to the public health, safety, and general welfare criterion, and that, uh, public interest is defined as a welfare or well-being of the general public. So you can already kind of see those, those terms being, being intermixed. Uh, we considered creating a new criterion specific to equity or considered, uh, criterion specific to the environment. Um, but really, we felt that that would be redundant because our plans so robustly address both equity and environmental concerns. Yeah, uh, so, um... Uh, again, and again, during that round of meetings in April, uh, we were asked to reconsider how to adapt, modernize that public health, safety, and general welfare. It became clear that we really need to keep an additional criterion rather than, uh, kind of bake that public health, safety, and general welfare criterion into the plan's consistency language that we had, um, that we had talked about in those previous meetings. Um, and we looked at ideas to, to how we could evaluate whether the rezoning was in the, the, um, public interest regardless of any, uh, adopted plan consistency. We considered options to create a, consider a criterion that would focus on equity, climate impacts, or combination of some of the vision elements in our plans. But ultimately, we concluded that our adopted plans already have these robust policies, strategies, and goals in place that would allow full consideration of any equity impacts as part of that adopted plan consistency criterion. Um, in advance of this meeting, we did provide, um, some additional documentation that summarizes how our adopted plans address equity and climate impacts in the context of a rezoning. Um, and ultimately, also developing another criterion to address equity or climate impacts would be redundant. Again, because CPD, uh, uh, feels that if we, if there's a decision that was going to be made or council wanted to make a decision based on climate or equity, um, you could point to, uh, different goals, policies, and strategies in our adopted plans in order to do so. Uh, we would also commit to, uh, our CPD would commit to, uh, as part of our staff recommendation, uh, providing some more, uh, documentation and summarization of the adopted plan guidance related to both of these concepts. So to, Brandon, so to close the loops, uh, this slide kind of summarizes what, what I just walked through. And these are the proposed kind of different components of our proposal, what we're retaining, what we're clarifying, what we're, what we're removing, and then finally, what we're changing. And what that results in, as something that might look like this. Again, this is very preliminary, this is not the, the exact language, but just to give you an idea of what this might look like in a, in a, in a draft, this, uh, this slide shows what those criteria, uh, might look like. So all rezonings would be subject to these two criteria. First, the consistency with adopted plans, and also the public interest criterion. Um, uh, you'll also see how this exception that we talked about fits in. So this is the exception to the adopted plans criterion. It's only applicable if a rezoning provides for an extraordinary community need that was not anticipated at the time, the adoption, city's plans. So this current provision, or this provision currently lives within this consistency with adopted plans. And by pulling it out here, we're, we're, we're fully emphasizing this importance of that consistency with adopted plans. So with that, we'll pause here for a single question that we have, but also looking forward to, um, uh, to discussion or any questions that you have about our proposal. Uh, so, you know, we came into this process all knowing we wouldn't be able to solve everything with this project. Um, but, but what we're really asking today is, is can you live with CPD staff moving forward this public review draft, um, of these criteria as real?
So we have some people in the queue before we go to key question.
That's perfect.
All right. First, we have Councilmember Lynch.
Thank you, uh, President. I have some apprehension about losing the, uh, fifth criterion, consistency with neighborhood context descriptions, zone district purpose, and intent statements. Uh, walk me through that again. Why would you want to drop that? Would that open the door to map amendments that are inconsistent with the neighborhood context?
That's a great question. So, so no, we wouldn't. So that, the, the reason that we are comfortable removing that, that criterion, right? What that does is it really ties that, those descriptions in the Denver zoning code to describe those districts, where they are, how they're used. All of that language now, or not all of it, but, but that language in, in, in intent and in essence is, lives now in the plan guidance, right? So our, our adopted plans, specifically Blueprint Denver and the NPI plans, have future context descriptions.
Ration one.
Exactly. Yes, exactly, right. And so we feel like that, those descriptions in the plan guidance kind of take that place now.
So we're not losing that. We're not opening the door to inconsistent, uh, with neighborhood context applications amendments.
That's correct, yes.
Then the second question, uh, there was the, uh, exception for community need, uh, not anticipated at the time of a plan adoption. With some of our plans being 30 years old, that's really easy to go along with.
Right.
But would that, would that open the door to an exception for a community need that nevertheless is inconsistent with adopted plans?
Yes, that, that's kind of the idea, right? That, that within that time.
Do you have any examples in my, that's what I was getting at. Do you have any examples?
I think the most recent examples that come to my mind are when this, because this provision currently exists in our code, uh, would be the, the hotel rezonings for, uh, to, to address the homeless crisis.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's good.
We definitely have Councilmember Sawyer.
Thank you. Um, so I can live with this. Uh, I do have a little bit of concern, um, that I think we'll hear from the public during public feedback, right? Which is, if we are going, um, to two criteria that are very broad, um, and with that exception to consistency with adopted plans, um, how would we ever say no to any rezoning that comes before council? Um, and I think that we need to consider that before we, um... Before we move forward with this going to the public, because depending on how you read these, no council member would ever be able to say no to any rezoning ever, um, given how broad these are. So I think that's a concern. Second question, um, is, so for legislative rezonings, we only have three criteria that we need to meet. Um, so I'm curious whether then the, the idea here is all rezonings go to these two criteria with a one exception, um, legislative and applicant-driven?
That's good.
Is that, that's correct? Okay, great. And then, sorry, one last question in terms of, um, historic properties. So a little bit different quasi judicial hearing, but still criteria that we need to look at. Um, have we considered, um, kind of looping these two criteria into that conversation as well as we're, as we're looking at historic properties in particular?
Do you mean like, uh, like a landmark designation criteria? Can't say that we have. No. So, um, yeah, well, that, we can definitely take a look into that.
I think it would be worth looking into. Um, you're shaking your head, so you agree with me. If you want to build out on that idea, go for it. I, I do see some kind of dovetailing here with, um, historic landmark designations, um, that, and I think we should consider it as we're, as we're putting, if we're going to go through the effort to put this out to the public altogether, we should consider that too.
That, that's a great point. And I will say, we haven't considered how this ties into the, the criteria for the landmark designation, but our adopted plans, including Blueprint Denver, does speak in, in, in great detail about how we should be working to preserve that sort of, those goals and policies which, which could be considered, so.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanted to bring it up here.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
If we're going out to the public with it, I think we should, I think we'll get some questions about that too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have a couple of quickies. First of all, I, I want to, um, echo Councilmember Lynch's concerns about dropping the criteria about matching the intent statements. I, and my, my, you know, two things I would, I would, two points I would make on that. One is, is that our plans, plans are not zoning. And though they give us guidance, I think that particularly when we talk about edges, when we talk about intersections of different areas and circumstances changing on the ground, that if the only guidance is what it says in the plan, I think it potentially handcuffs. So I do worry a little bit about that, but I also worry because of how our zoning code is, is written, because of the form-based nature of it and how very specific it is on things like setbacks, et cetera. I believe that we sometimes find ourselves examining zone districts which may not be appropriate from an intent point of view because they fit the measurements of what we're dealing with. Andrew and I dealt with this some years ago, and in the end, we had to resolve it with the PUD. But along the way, because of resistance to a PUD, we were looking at a suburban zone district at 39 New York, which doesn't make a lot of sense from an intent standpoint. So I think it's just another guardrail to help us ensure that we're going about it correctly. The, the one other thing I wanted to mention is, as much as I like the public interest and extraordinary, uh, community need pieces, conceptually, the one concern I have is that I think they are both very, very broad. And I think it's very challenging to apply those because they can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So if we are going to go down that route, I, I'd like to suggest that we consider how we can help to provide guidance to applicants and communities as well as to planning board and the council as to what those mean. And, and that may be something in the zoning code. I start to wonder if it should be, if it maybe could be a policy paper and policy guidance that we use to help guide us so that that can be updated and adapted as we find ourselves struggling with issues. Because I think that's what's going to happen, is that we're going to find ourselves in circumstances where we say, gosh, I wish I had some guidance on this. And then perhaps if we do it at a policy level, we can find a path toward doing it without having to do a text amendment every time we learn something new. Thank you.
Ashley, your part is on deck?
Thank you. Um, so, in my understanding, there's nowhere thus far that there's a draft of exactly what these, of the new, um, criteria may be.
No, what's on the screen here is probably the closest we have to a, to a draft at this point.
Yeah, I probably waited for a final version. And I think I heard in the introduction, this is the final of our meetings. I would think probably good to have one more final thing is out before it's released, certainly to the public. But my main, main air question, so one of the early slides, a series of equity and climate questions will be provided to the decision-makers and communities so they can apply these concepts to rezonings. What, how, what, what does this look like? What's the intent?
It might be pretty similar to what Fred was talking about, where it's this kind of policy guide on, on kind of guidance for, for a community to, to interpret some of these. Um, it, it might look pretty similar to the document that we distributed before this, in advance of this meeting. I think last week, last Thursday, we sent it out. It might look pretty similar to that, but basically pull some of the goals, policies, and strategies that are within the plans in order to, to help, to help, you know, you as a decision-maker pull those pieces out without having to hunt through the, the plan.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Madam President, um, the slide 10, on the why public interest. Um, I don't mind the language change. I do wonder and question the third bullet under that around that our adopted plans address equity and environmental concerns. I think we state equity a lot. We also reference equity analysis or, um, equitable outcomes a lot in looking at the West Area Plan right now and how we reference equity. But what we, we don't have is, um... And neither in the plan nor what I've seen in terms of kind of a companion, uh, process for this is what actually produces equity when we're talking about if it's a large development in West Denver or a single rezoning in West Denver. Is, is there a, uh, criteria? Is there a review? Is there, uh, if this, then that? Is it much more nuanced than that? Too nuanced to put into a bullet point list, right? One of the things that we reference in the West Area Plan is that this process would focus on implementing city goals around equity, through transparency and access to the rezoning process, consider the impact of rezonings on neighborhood residents and properties, and explore how rezonings can lead to equitable outcomes that better serve all community members. So that's, that's what we promised West Denver residents in the West Area Plan. And I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering if, um, maybe I'm ahead of kind of that process, um, in my question. And we're just talking about maybe phase one of something. But what we're, what we're, what we're telling people is that we're going to create some other tool for us to assess, is this a more equitable outcome for West Denver based on the West Area Plan, based on the conversations we're having in West Denver? Um, and, and that's why it gets a check, right, on, on equity? Uh, or do we still leave that up to the ether for us to debate? Um, and just kind of leave out there, which is, I feel like what it is now. Um, so that's a very rambling version of, I don't know where we stand on that. Um, and, and I don't think we can say that our adopted plans address this. I think they reference it, uh, but they certainly don't give me a better, uh, and more clear idea that even if we change it to public interest, which I find that, that it gets well-defined elsewhere, but it definitely doesn't tell me, okay, I have a better sense of what equity means when we're adopting or considering this plan or this check change, whatever that might look like. So just offering that, I feel like there's something to say for me on, on what does that tell me?
Yeah. Well, that's great feedback, and I hope the second part of this presentation kind of gets to some of those pieces.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, yeah. Go to shit?
Just.
Hi. I saw somebody, we didn't read, like, a link that they were getting to electronically, and they were already here. They are, yeah. Hi, hi.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, uh, to what Councilmember Sori was saying, uh, about how it's, uh, kind of broad, I, I mean, I would agree. And, um, so... Not trying to help developers, as to developers, uh, uncertainty is expensive and, uh, and with uncertainty, might be overly broad for us to determine one way or the other. But on, on the flip side, um, this is the, uh, the reason why developers exist is, as entities, is to create more things for our city. And not knowing, having that uncertainty will make it more difficult for, for a development process and likely, you know, raise the cost of building, housing, portable housing, et cetera. So, um, to, along, you know, with similar lines, not trying to necessarily go to bad for developers. What I am trying to do is go to bad for cost-effective development in our city. So, um, thank you for bringing up the broad, the, um, historic preservation, uh, also as Councilmember Suri was saying. Um, it, it sounds like there's some land use decisions that, um, that the buck stops with, um, with CPD and landmark. And, um, mentioned this one property in particular committee yesterday, uh, where it sounds like the final call will be, um, in a landmark, and it's a, it's a structure that is designated historic, but it's caught fire, it has been condemned by the fire department. And, um, and it sounds as if, uh, there still will be a, um, a, a call from historic preservation to preserve it.
I just clarified, so, because when people say landmark, I think you're accusing, so there are staff in CPD who work in a division that we call landmark or historic preservation, right? Then there's a landmark preservation commission, and that is, they by law make those decisions for buildings in historic districts. Um, so yes, that is, that is something that falls under the purview of the landmark preservation commission. And if we want, you know, we could always set up, like, today we're here talking, and I hear you interested in more connection maybe between when there's a rezoning that's also associated with a historic preservation decision, but kind of regardless of where that conversation goes, and if there's interest to just better understand a landmark preservation commission, and today we have the planning board here. The preservation commission's a little different, and that's one of the, the differences in names often between a commission versus the board, right? They are, um, there are a lot of things the planning board has, I shouldn't say a lot. There are a few things the planning board actually has, like when we bring an amendment to the comp plan, the planning board actually has to approve that before it goes to the city, rather than just make a recommendation. But like on a rezoning decision, it's a recommendation, which is still a really important role, correct, right? But it's different than LPC. They have, um, the power and authority to deny applications. Um, but then they don't even need to go on to city council, right? Because they've already been denied. Uh, so it is a little different. When you mentioned there's some landmarks, sorry, there is, but it's with a commission, it's not with, um, our staff or...
So, thank you. Good clarification. Um, I'm assuming this was where ordinance change as well, uh, because we're changing the adopted criteria.
Has this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. This would change the Denver zoning code.
Yeah, so as we consider, uh, ordinance change, um, maybe we can put that in a, in a consideration as well.
I think it'd be a little out of scope just because the, um, the landmark preservation regulations don't live in the Denver zoning code. It's a completely different, it lives in DRMC. So I think, but very interested to talk more, you know, starting with, we could do, start with just like a joint work session like this between city council and LPC, right? To better understand, um, how does the process work and thought sources, something we can talk about.
Thank you. And, um, and then just one, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this, other than, but it is still not fully settled for me. It's just, uh, I don't want a developer to say that, um, we were arbitrary and capricious in part because our plan, this, you know, our criteria is just kind of to do this. I mean, you know, it just seems like it is quite broad. I don't want to, um, so, not trying to stick up for developers. I am trying to stick up for cost-effective, uh, development in our city.
Yeah. Thank you. So, uh, first of all, thank you for all your work.
So first of all, thank you for all your work, and I want to acknowledge that we have proudly worked on this for four years now, and there is definitely a need or desire to move on. So while this may not be perfect, this may be as good as it gets with the knowledge that we have and just the best efforts that we are putting towards this project and the homey staff has done. So, uh, I just want to mention a couple of things, um, kind of echo what Fred was saying. I do get a little bit of hesitation, uh, regarding removing the criteria about the consistency with the neighborhood context. I think in some cases it's really clear, it's urban, it's suburban, but there are contexts that are not as clear. For example, edge, it's intentionally meant as a transitional context or general context. So in that case, there's really not a clear definition. So my concern is that we may end up with just kind of this much patchwork that essentially, um, eliminates that consistency of the neighborhood character. So just want to bring it up. Um, and also that public interest, I also have some hesitation. It seems like we just, um, replaced words that were maybe a little bit offensive with words that are less offensive, but we didn't necessarily change the content and the essence of it. So it's still ambiguous and it's still subjective in a sense that whoever, depends on who the public is on the given day. The public may show up and express their best interest, and it may vary depending on the day. So I would appreciate more clarity about how we interpret that.
Thank you. Are there anyone, um, I need to go to people who have, yeah. Okay. Heidi?
You. Um, I just want to share some of, um, cautious concern on public interest. Um, we know that oftentimes it is members of the public of means that have the ability to really come out and voice and fight down a rezoning. Um, so just have a, a little bit of, of shared concern about that, that it's, it's not an empowering tool to those of means in our community, um, to fight down a rezoning that they may not like because they don't want more people in their neighborhood, um, or those people in their neighborhood, or those people that are in ADUs, right? Fred, you heard that. Um, and then the second, um, ask I would just have of staff is that, um, one of the the concerns I have when I make it on a, a decision on a rezoning is really understanding what that impact on equity is specifically in terms of displacement. Um, I, I don't feel like I have the right tool set to know, am I going to be making a decision in some certain areas, Bill Park was rezoning making up that I was nervous about, that my decision could in fact displace more people and, and not lead to an equitable outcome. And so I know this is a discussion the Planning Board's had many times, um, and I'm just not sure if our city has the resources to truly track and understand what outcomes are in our neighborhood. Um, you know, specifically when we look at our vulnerable displacement map, uh, there's, there's neighborhoods on that map that said they're less vulnerable to displacement. And my head scratch is always, well, is that because everybody was there, already got displaced? And so I don't really, I understand with staff, I'm, I'm kind of giving you a, almost an impossible task, but as we move forward with this criteria, which by the way, I find that is written, um, and we look at doing more reports, um, based around environmental impact and equity for me. Uh, when I make decisions on the planning board, I just, I need more, I need more data. I really need to understand what's happening in these neighborhoods so that I feel confident when I make a decision that I'm not, um, a part of causing harm, but rather a part of doing this, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I think it was very meaningful to talk about what does equity mean. I really think the fact that we talk about equity and what it actually means are two very different things. Um, I, I feel you, Councilman Heinz, on that is very broad, for sure. Um, I think that when we're trying to get rid of the phrase public health and welfare, like even though it has such a bad connotation, made more sense than just in the public interest. Um, but maybe the original idea, just seeing what the consistency with adopted plans is the better option. Um, because the adopted plans talk about equity, and I think one of the big concerns as Councilman Cashman always talks about is sustainability, and those are the things that it talks about in our adopted plans. Um, and so I would definitely be interested in what legal thinks of having public interest, which is very broad. Did you, oh, sorry. But I also, on the other hand, could see that it brings in that human factor where things aren't black and white, and there's something that maybe hasn't been addressed by adopted plans yet. Obviously, we went through COVID. Um, that could say why a congregant shelter would no longer be an option that we want to use in the city, um, kind of thing. So I'm curious what others think, but curious about what legal thinks about the public interest, and maybe the original idea was a good interest. And on the landmark thing, my concern is that I don't want my building to be landmarked, so I light it on fire, which has been known to happen. So that's kind of like your touch.
We have Mary and Melissa.
Um, yeah, thank you. So I just want to, um, elevate from my notes, the last time this group got together, as we were talking about getting rid of, uh, public health, safety and welfare, the conversation was, we need a tool to have discretion. So I appreciate that public interest is very broad, but it was the direction of this group that told them to keep something broad in there. So there's that balance point. Um, the other thing I want to elevate, I'm really excited to see the second half of this presentation. I think as other people have touched on, going with our existing, um, equity analysis is a little bit challenging because the data doesn't get to exactly what we're looking for in a lot of cases. I'm just curious, um, Anjel Fowler had sent, uh, how DC has processed this. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, but it asked the developer to answer questions. What community is impacted by the zoning action? Um, you know, what are the historic and current discrimination issues that are happening? So it goes beyond sort of a static point in time examination of vulnerability to displacement, but asks for a current today look at both the present moment and the history of who's going to be impacted by this change. And then based on that screening, there are some different steps that are taken. Um, whether it be enhanced community engagement to find out what community members would most benefit from in terms of a way for the developer to step up and have it serve the community more. But I think having a screen like that, that is more responsive to current conditions, could be a beneficial way of getting around some of those issues.
Okay. Um, thank you. Agreed. Um, I think we ask for a lot of discretion and also like, because these are complicated questions. And also, once you see it in front of you laid out of what that decision process would actually be, maybe we feel differently about it. So that's probably helpful. Um, but and then part of this is like, just recognizing also, like this is, no one has solved this. Like we have this problem in housing everywhere, like no one has solved this. There's not like a nice answer of like, this will do no harm. Um, I think, which I think is why the DC tool is really helpful, because all we can do is sort of hit on the history and like what we know about it and sort of do our best. Um, but you can't actually predict the future. Um, so I do think that that's helpful, and I think that's been the frustration with the way the equity analysis works right now. So that would be a good move. The thing that I wanted to ask about specifically about the public interest, I can sort of not, the broadness. I actually am generally a fan of using a term that's already defined in law so that you have sort of standing in case law and everything to, to back it up. I think that's really helpful. My concern specifically with public interest, I don't know if you guys will get into this, or if this requires refining. Um, but in that, when that's generally used, it is usually used in a context of the greater good, which is directly contrary to the kind of equity that we're talking about. So like, I don't know if you guys have the, like, I don't know if we're going to get into that more, but like, that's just my flag with using public interest specifically. I think it's the right move, but I think that the way that it's usually used is actually really different from how we're thinking about equity. Cause by definition, the equity that we're talking about is not the majority. So that's, that's just my concern with, with that one. So no play.
Um, yeah, I, I've been really annoying, I've been like getting in and out of the queue. It's like you have your thoughts and then people say my thoughts, but anyway, it's been a victory. Um, so first of all, I, I do think that, um, thinking through what Councilmember Sori was saying about the public interest criteria. To me, that would actually give me a tool to, um, decline or post rezones, because instead of having to kind of stuff my reasoning into a box of like health or, you know, I could just say like, um, what, you know, that I'm concerned about, um, that this is like a whole bunch of studios in a family neighborhood or whatever it is, right? Um, so we could express like our actual concern more honestly, I think. And to me, that would probably lead me to feel comfortable voting no slightly more often, if that makes sense. Um, I wonder too if it, maybe it needs to be, and I'm sorry, because again, I know we've, you guys have been doing this forever, and you got to do Councilmen and all that, but if, if to Melissa's concern, if it could be, um, like equity and public interest. And then I also agree that we need to then develop out some of the tools that we've seen good examples of, the PC example that you just referred to, um, to help us all, if we're thinking about what do those things mean to us? Um, but I would maybe feel a little bit better about, um, public interest not, not coming to mean, um, like the broadest possible cross section or just the majority or whatever else, if we, if we just like have the word equity in there, right? Um, and I also think that this council is reasonably good at being very attuned, um, to that dimension of public interest. But, um, you know, I, I agree, we could use like thinking tools, um, for all of us at every stage to help us figure out like, what is it that we're supposed to be, um, looking for, but that, but that it doesn't have to be in the, um, in the review criteria. It could be a separate tool. So I, in the end, I like, I think this would be fine. Um, and I also think we would have more to do to help us, um, with the meat of the public interest and equity. And those things can change over time. Sorry, thanks.
Um, so I'm going to go and then I'll go, we have another round.
Council President, just.
Okay. Councilwoman, I think we have other people.
Yeah, Council President, just going to be quick. I mean, folks, I was, you know, like Councilwoman Parity, folks have stated my points. I, I think this is solid, I'm, I'm fine with this. I think really having the tools to, especially the public interest piece, to make sure that we are delineating what that is. And I, I, I don't believe that it will cause us to be forced to say more yeses. I, I think I agree with Councilwoman Parity that, um, public interest and equity laws may provide opportunities for us to push harder. Um, but, um, I, there is not much that, uh, I think without the tools and without the actual document, as Councilmember Cashman described, I would actually like to see, um, the final piece. I know this is supposedly the last meeting, but hey, wouldn't mind having another meeting to see the final, 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 final. Um, but that's, it's just, Council President.
From now, Campbell?
Thank you. Um, I, and thank you. I just appreciate all the comments that it's helping me solidify my thinking as well. I do love the idea of having equity added to that, if possible, um, and maybe taking that step to define what equity then means in this process. And I know that's what this whole, um, this whole effort in equity, but I mean, but equity means different things to different people. And I, I think in this context, it does help to have something that is more clearly defined, or at least a direction for how we would like to see equity implemented. So I'm good with the language, if you want to add equity or if we could add equity to it, but I think that that is more, it's additional work for people to define and to, and to clarify. If we don't identify it, maybe that's the nuance that you were talking about earlier, um, Torres.
Yeah.
I didn't know what to call you.
No, Torres.
So I just, I just wonder if, are we missing the opportunity to be more explicit about what we want to see occur?
Thank you. Thank you. So I, I think I've, I've been on here in this like entire time, this whole process, starting as the council representative. So I'm glad to see us going away from, um, the uniformity of district regulations and restrictions. I just never even understood what that meant, and I studied this. I will say, and even the justification circumstances, I will say that the consistency with neighborhood context descriptions or district purpose and intent statements, I have to be aggressive, Fred, that that does give, it does give some certainty with our intent statements. Um, there's a, uh, on forty-four and eight, it's UMX two X. And so when we've been, when we had to go to the Board of Adjustments and November, um, Need and Desire Hearing, we actually used that intent statement to show that we didn't need this because it intended to do this. So I think our intent statements are kind of our value statements within the Denver zoning code. And so if you could think about maybe rephrasing it or adding it, or maybe putting it somewhere in one of the other ones, but I really do, like, if you go into the zoning code, when I teach people zoning who don't know much about it, I always start with that intent statement. And the intent statement is what got me to really work on the Design Relay eight for the active street use because the intent is safe to have different pieces, pieces within this corridor. And so, um, I also agree that if, if it's in the public interest, to go to this point, the public can be anyone, find anyone, it's not any giveaway. And so I think it does give us, it's not making me force it to say public health, safety and general well, or, or welfare. I think thinking about, if we all sit here and think about the people who are going to replace you all on the planning board and the people who are going to replace us, and the people who are going to replace the planners who've been working on this project, does this protect our future? And that's what I'm always thinking of when we're, we're doing this work, is how are we protecting the future generations of Denver, right? So I don't mind it saying public interest, I also have the same question as Albius. What did the lawyer say about this? I think they said it was insane, it was just a different phrase, it's all semantics, right? But it makes it cleaner and it's not based, it is not racist, um, keeping people out and keeping those who we want in, at which I really wanted to get to at the root of this equity concern. Um, so those are just my thoughts. If, if we could have somehow the consistency with neighborhood context, maybe rephrased or put, just somehow get it back in there, because I think our intent statements are important. And I'll just say for, as another meeting, um, that's possible at, yet at the same time, that pushes this project way out. And we all want neighborhood plans and we all want other, um, planning processes in our council districts. And we all have five like updates to former chapter fifty-nine. And so when we're asking for another meeting, we have to weigh the ability, availability of staff to be able to move forward on a project. So instead of another meeting, could we feel comfortable with CPD sending it out, the language out to us before it went for a public review draft? And even though that's a lot of work on CPD, filing a whole bunch of different emails, but then that way it gives us concern, see if you could say, hey, if we get you this language for seventy-two hours, can you process it? And give us feedback, and then give us, then send it back to us. A lot of times that, that's what we'll have to do with council members, is we can't always meet, we're sending emails. Uh, because I really want this project to be done, and I really like it to be checked off my list of having served on it for almost two years. And I mean, Councilwoman Albius was barely, not even thinking about running for council when she joined. The top person, now here she is in her first, her first year in. And we all want to be able to utilize this amazing staff for other projects. So as you're asking for those considerations, I just ask you, ask that you take in the consideration of what we also ask from CPD as well. So with that, back in the queue is, we have Greg, and then Cashman on there.
Excuse me, Madam President. I will say that we have, we're about halfway through, and I know you all are going to really want to talk about the next topic as well. So if we could move on to the next, or if you have a couple of question, comments to get through, but let's kind of.
How about we do speed dating, and I'm literally going to set like a minute and a half timer. And then my phone was, you have ninety seconds to speak, um, because I know we can all be at this rate.
That's perfect. Thank you.
So we have, I mean, Cashman, Sawyer, and Torres.
Great. I just want to back up on, on quickly on what was mentioned about landmarks and about sustainability. Um, to highlight, one of the things I think we want to be careful about. To highlight, one of the things I think we want to be careful about as we, as we move through this and what we try to bring into the rezoning process is a concern about conflicting city priorities and conflicting understandings, even within the city, of how we solve those things. Very recently, had a conversation with some folks who were in a residence in a historic building in Modo. The engineers that they had hired tell them that the best case scenario is by twenty thirty-two, they will be paying a hundred thousand dollars in penalties under Energized Denver. And that's kind of the best case scenario. And the response they got from Kesar was, well, that building will clearly just be economically unviable and will need to be torn down and replaced. So we have these conflicting elements of preservation and community and neighborhood and sustainability. I think we have differing understandings perhaps of what sustainability and how one might solve sustainability. And if you were to come to me, I might say, you know, the baseline in my mind might be that any request to be zoned out of an S U district contributes to sustainability because of recent testification. So I want to just make sure that we, as we contemplate what all sits within this, that we be a little careful. We risk opening some doors to some broader things that are conflic, some broader conflicts that I don't think we can resolve within zoning, the city may need to resolve at a higher level.
Councilman Patrick.
Yeah, I, nothing to look for CPD staff and the task force. Thanks for everything that's been done. But I don't know what we, I mean, I know vaguely what we're talking about. But to say this is ready for a public draft, it's, I, it's not. I mean, it, whether we have a meeting or not, that we can negotiate. But, you know, I asked before, I hate to keep bringing up sustainability, but our planet's burning. And I don't see this yet taking that seriously. I asked about what all those questions look like. I was directed to what we got last Thursday. And I'm seeing the three-page document that says, considering equity and climate as a part of the adopted plan consistency criterion. In the paragraphs, it mentions sustainability a few times. But then it gets down to draft examples, how to apply the equity concepts to rezonings. And it does have ten questions on equity, but it has zero questions on sustainability. I'm not going to let that doggy go, not even close. It's too important and we're being way too casual about it. So that's what, when I think about that, I'd like to see a legal read on the term public interest. How that actually, if there's precedence on how that is actually.
Got you, bro.
Sounds like an ad.
Next gap.
Thanks. Just off of what Council Torres said. And Mary, I think, and Koshia, you know, everyone sort of is saying the same thing. And so I'm going to make a proposal here and you're going to hate me because it's going to take more energy. Sorry. I think the solution is to, if you go back to that previous slide with the bricks, right? So retaining, clarifying, remove uniformity of district regulation, clarify consistency of intent statements, remove justifying circumstances, change to public interest. And then I think there's already the language in our area plans of public impact. So maybe the equity conversation, the questions from D C, the sort of, right? It, it's, it's not in the public interest section. It's in the public impact section. And that impact section is where we look at the historic context and redlining and, you know, all of the equity concerns that we're talking about here and add that piece in. And then that leaves that public interest piece, which is already legally defined in a lot of different places to be, so that we're not muddying those waters with what is public interest versus what is the equity impact we're trying to get to here. So that's my recommendation, take it or leave it. But I do think it would get us where we are saying we want to go here.
And.
Thank you. Take. I want to synthesize what I've heard from, I guess, Sawyer, Heinz, or Mayor Campbell and Council President. Over the many years that I've been watching rezonings, city council has dripped, dripped, dripped away a lot of its land use authority that has basically our authority under our general powers in the charter and given it to the administration. And to paraphrase what Councilwoman Sawyer said, what would we vote no on under these very broad and vague criteria? I would love, I've said this on the floor several times, I would love for staff to come to us and point out not just the consistency with adopted plans of application, but where is it inconsistent? Because I can always cherry pick from COP twenty forty and Blueprint and say, okay, this one, this one, this one says this is a good thing. Vote for it. Debbie Ortega always used to say, and I watched it on the floor decades ago, we rezoned when we had a project, so we knew what we were zoning for. Now we're just rezoning to make land more valuable to somebody. We don't know what's going to go on it. That troubles me. So I would love, I would love to see us keep the, it's not there anymore. That one, consistency with the neighborhood context description, zone district purpose and intent. Because those will be very useful to us in retaining at least some authority to do an authentic review of an application. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Great discussion. Great to be on through the second portion of the presentation, which is ensuring goodness equitable outcomes. So these proposed changes will have additional requirements for a small proportion of rezonings, those which we think have the potential to significantly impact neighborhoods. We expect about seven to eleven rezonings per year to fit into this category. So for these rezonings, we're proposing an additional engagement and commitment requirement for about ten percent of our rezonings per year that meet the following thresholds. First, we want to capture the rezonings of larger sites, those that are five acres or more. Second, we also want to capture rezonings that could enable intense or more dense development on smaller sites, those being one acres or more and requesting the, to double the allowed height. Next, a threshold to capture rezonings in transitioning industrial areas, those being one or more acres and requesting residential or mixed uses where they're not currently allowed. And finally, a threshold to capture rezonings in vulnerable areas. So to give everybody a sense of what those look like on the ground, here you can see the difference between one acre and five acres. On the left, we have a square block in Highland. And on the right, a more traditional rectangular block on the long South Broadway at the Spear Neighborhood. So again, for those ten percent of cases or one percent of major development, we're proposing to increase the noticing radius from two hundred feet currently to four hundred feet to make people more aware of the rezoning and requiring a community engagement plan and community meeting before an application is submitted. We expect a combination of an upgraded equity analysis and the community and the, the community feedback to inform equity issues that need commitments at the time of rezoning. We've been working with multiple departments and agencies to finalize listed commitments, which was also provided last Thursday. And these are all based on current staff and budget constraints. Keep in mind that this is just a starting point and we are very hopeful that it can expand into the future. When running this list past Planning Board of City Council Members, we seem to accept smaller menu for the, for the current time and voice some concern over what kind of flexibility would be allowed after the rezoning is approved. Here are some of the examples that we've lifted from the menu. These commitments can address a variety of vision elements and equity concepts in our adopted plans, including environmental resiliency, increasing access to opportunity, mitigating vulnerability to involuntary displacement and increasing housing and jobs diversity. For us to do this successfully and efficiently, we've also been working with the city attorney's office and our partner agencies to develop easy-to-use templates, perhaps consist of select commitments from, aiming to reduce the need for negotiating on a site-by-site basis and improving the administration and monitoring of commitments over time. We're also wanting to respond to the flexibility concern by acknowledging that projects can change after a rezoning occurs. In some instances, additional community engagement might be warranted. And we want to make these adminis, these amendments administrative and possible and only require council action unless absolutely necessary. With that, we'll briefly go through next steps and again, open it up for discussion. Had some task force meetings a couple of weeks ago, meeting with you all today. I'm at our third and maybe final joint session. We'll then be planning for another round of community engagement and a public meeting in the late summer or fall before moving into the adoption process. Been meeting with planning board and city council committees in advance of anticipating adoption before the end of the year. With that, we'll move forward to a similar round of discussion. The question here being, do you support these two major improvements proposed by this project team?
I have PK Heinz. PK, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Councilman Catherine. Sorry.
In this, it wasn't mentioned specifically, but in the slides, cool roofs and materials for smaller buildings. So just like townhomes that are built in, you can have, I have a project of a hundred and ninety-eight townhomes, but they're in multiple buildings, none of which meets the twenty-five thousand square foot. Is this what you're talking about that would apply to?
That is correct, yes. Currently, we require cool roofs for buildings over twenty-five thousand square feet. This is a commitment to get that outcome for small.
And how are we ensuring that people are following with the provisions of the.
So we're working closely with the folks who administer the green buildings ordinance. And we are confident that we can, at the time of rezoning, capture this commitment and that it will be followed through and executed and monitored over time as a site development plan comes in.
Okay. I inquired about a particular project in my district. And I was told needs to size recallings and was told that it was in the development plan, but we have to send an inspector out to there. But our inspectors are, as with everything else in their process, ensuring that the green resort is followed.
That's correct. And we also think that we have an opportunity to capture with the reviewers, so before inspection is needed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Heinz and Mary.
Thank you, Madam President. Mary, you had a good point about how three months ago we asked for broader. And then here I am saying, yeah, it's too rushed. That's. Yeah. Well, while the hassle is three months, so I take a little bit of the, you know, the amount of time between the last competition. So thank you for your consulting. They, the, this slide in particular, there's a particular owner who recently has become a developer, a property owner, has recently become a developer again. And the city has asked for it. Different agencies have asked for commitments. Certainly, we should ask for things if they want extra stuff. They want a view plan to be moved. That's, you know, that's, they want, they want to rezone, they want a view plan to be moved, you know, those sorts of things. Like that, that should be above the on. But does the model that you're talking about, I, the, the pushback was that every agency that was involved was asking for something. And, and the comment from the developer was, sure, one or two agencies can get their, their full ask, but if every agency is asking for a full ask, they want their flesh, out of flesh. So does the model help us make it less arbitrary and, and make sure that we're, we're, I mean, if they want more stuff, we should, you know, get more stuff in return. We just want to be sure that we're not, and the question of the whole city.
Well, that's a great point. And I think with this, with this, we are hoping to be able to identify what needs might exist at the time at the pre-application phase through an upgraded equity analysis, which will then point us to what the appropriate commitments might be and only involve those partner agencies. So it's not everybody asking for something and then we really identify what is most important to address at the time of rezoning to get an equitable outcome at a particular site.
And in defense of the city, this, I'm thinking one example, and that property owner has waffled a lot of their thoughts. So it isn't as if the city was just trying to get a pound of flesh. I think there was some, you know, some confirmation. And, yeah.
Thank you. Mary and then Greg on that.
Thank you. This is cool. Thank you guys very much for this work. Just a couple of clarifying questions and, and some points. For the areas vulnerable to displacement, kind of the same concern that I expressed earlier of like moment in time versus ongoing. So I would love to maybe explore how we can get a more current analysis of who's living there, who's vulnerable. You know, how can we make this most effective as opposed to relying on just, you know, what we have from ACS two years ago? And then just a couple of questions. So the menu selection process is supposed to be informed by the community engagement.
It's in addition to staff doing the equity analysis upfront.
Okay.
And then confirming with partner agencies, this might be a commitment that's worth exploring. Then we then take it to our required public meeting where we engage the public, get their input and see if that's still the right commitment that makes sense.
Okay. So I, I don't necessarily need answers to all of these things right now, but just a few things I want to flag. Working on community benefits agreements, figuring out which community, which part of the community gets to have their priority elevated, you know, regardless of who we're talking about when we say community, they rarely speak with one voice. So just putting that out there. And then thinking about how to balance the, the amount of the ask, kind of getting to your point, Councilman Heinz, about, you know, every department wanting their pound of flesh. The community is going to want several different sectors of concessions as well. So just figuring out how to scale that, I think, will be important. And then just the ever-present challenge of the divorce between rezoning and development actually happening. And so figuring out how to make that relevant as development plans change. And then the one thing I would like you to speak about a little bit, because I know this has also been a persistent challenge, how will the agreements be tracked with the property? So if I buy a piece of land, how will I know what that land is committed to?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question that I can speak a little bit on. It kind of depends on what the most appropriate tool is for that commitment. So for some of these, a development agreement might be the best route. It could go along with the land and is there a, a court against the property? Another way that we're thinking about doing this could be a way of recording some kind of a document at the time of rezoning that then will get picked up when that site development thing comes in and then monitor it that way. But it's kind of dependent on what the commitment is and what the most appropriate tool could be to make sure that it doesn't get lost.
I would say just if there's something that could be included with title, so that if the purchaser is doing a title search, they see what conditions are on the property, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want, I want to kind of follow up on a concern that Mary expressed, and that is this divorce between rezoning and development. We know that there's often significant time periods that are in the interviewing period to changes in ownership, as you mentioned. I, I have continuing concerns with trying to peg down these pieces and this menu at the rezoning. It, it doesn't strike me as the most effective time to do it from a development standpoint. I think communities are far more interested generally in concrete development plans than they are in abstract zoning. And so I want to suggest that really a more appropriate time for determining which pieces is perhaps as part of the development titles process, entitlements process, part of an S D P or whatever that piece is. And so I do wonder if perhaps as part of the rezoning, we could, we could design a system that required a certain level of commitment from an applicant, maybe a point system. This, they've, they've committed to twenty-five points. And as the S D P process goes in place, here's the menu, here's how many points each of these is with. Perhaps part of, is part of the negotiation regarding community engagement. Part of that negotiation includes a requirement for community engagement around the S D P and around those pieces at the time of development. I think that that they better support the flexibility. I think that that they better support the flexibility that developers need. I think it may better support the, it may better support genuine community engagement on those questions. And I think it may also better support what we learn. As, as we know, we've, we've tried to do some interventions through zoning to create better outcomes. Doesn't always work out the way we think it's going to. And again, you, you did mention that some of this could be done administratively, but I think that this leads potentially to a better way for that flexibility, for staff to have that flexibility to adapt the system as we learn. And as we find out what works, what doesn't, what outcomes are really impacting community, what are not, and what may be hindering development at the very basis of it. So I just would put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have 15 minutes, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six people in the queue. I'll do the next one. So come to me first.
I'm trying to identify a couple of the different ways that we see rezonings coming through my district. Because I do feel like of the rezonings that begin, there's a bit of a disproportionate amount that's coming from District Three. The, what you've laid out, because I think they sit in different buckets. And Councilman Flynn is absolutely correct. I am starting to see more applications come through just since the West Area Plan was approved, just to upzone. There is no plan, they probably won't even keep the property. But before they, they, they sell it, they're going to upzone it to eight stories or whatever it may be. There is just as much interest that we have in a single-family home getting rezoned to duplex or to row homes as a stadium district or ball arena or Burnham Yard. But all of those are going to be things that are, are going to trigger this conversation. I, I feel like there is, part of what we're reaching for is a policy question for council as opposed to things that we can stuff in CPD's arsenal for rezoning consideration. And I'm thinking about like, is there a way for us to somehow mirror the Uniform Relocation Act locally? Where if you've got a family that's making 60 or 80% AMI, three kids, are you building to replace that family? Or are you displacing that family? That's real. And if we never, we could never consider something like that, what happens to the family that currently lives in a single-family house that, that you're rezoning? That's, I think, something different, but it's what my neighborhood is after when we're talking about rezonings. So I feel like there are different buckets for some of this, but even some of the small-scale stuff is still what's displacing West Denver. And so I, I'm, I think this is great because we have neighborhood context things, like is there going to be a grocery store in one of these locations? Are there going to be community serving units? And I see Dito and Nest like moving in that Dreshkin and getting some of those commitments down. But those are definitely things that need to be considered right now. For an SU to RH in Villa Park, we give them the equity analysis. That RNO didn't even know that they got that. So like now they know to request that, so they can see, what does the city say about my equity analysis? Maybe that should be something that is just available, right? Of a neighborhood or of a property when a rezoning comes through as part of the package. I feel like that's a very secret document that only the applicant gets. No matter what size of, of properties coming to you. So just some thoughts. Thank you.
After Councilman Perry, can I add one?
Yeah, so keeping it, but I, I also, what you said Flynn about the idea that we're just rezoning to add value to the chocolate. Somebody deep resonated in my soul. And I, I've been thinking about in conversations, starting to have conversations with some of the planning board members and still getting oriented up to all of this. What the, what you all on the prior council did with the EHA was you basically pulled something out of the survey artificially, only considered when there was a rezon, but in fact, it needed to be considered whenever there was development. And you just made a policy and now everybody follows it, right? And it's, and so now we actually don't so much have to talk about, like, are there going to be affordable units? Because you guys set a baseline for that. And so I've been thinking about what other kinds of areas, to Fred's point, we just shouldn't have policies that apply to all developments. And, you know, so that, that's, that's kind of neither here nor there. And I do, I also, I do really like this. I think it's sort of low stakes in a way that's nice because we could still make, also make policies about these things. We could still, but, but that balance between like, we're stuffing a lot into zoning that isn't actually about zoning. It's just our own chance to weigh in on things. And if they don't happen, have a reason, we don't weigh in on them. Does feel, you know, a little goofy. So that's, I'll keep, that's very short of all, sorry.
Heidi?
So I move the same thinking of Fred, that discussion question number two, that are equity commitments. That, that feels like it wants to be an development timeline process and not a rezoning process. So I don't think, we might not get the outcomes we're thinking we'll get if we do it in time of zoning. So can we give like an example or table or tower to, it's never been worked. I don't know if that actually came in for a result, but say it had. And we're 30, 40, 50 years out, and we're actually, they had committed to something back then. Is that really what the city needs now? So I want to make sure we get the best outcomes of that. And then just with the different menu items, it makes me think that maybe we have a bigger issue here, like Denver Parks additional open space and features. So if that's something, is, is what we're requiring now, right? Do we need to go back and look at Parks and Rec and what we're requiring for open space and features? Because to the point, if it's, this is only for 10% of the zonings. What, what's with the other 90% of developments we're doing in Parks and Rec and saying we need a more open space? Same thing with additional affordable units. We just passed EHA, was that not enough? So just some thoughts for staff to think about that perhaps these venue items, there's another one we should address. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, I don't, just to elaborate on what I said earlier in my 92nd briefing, I don't want to divorce rezonings from development. They're all part of the same process. If you divorce them, unfortunately, the neighborhood gets custody of the children, right? They have the consequences. I share, Councilwoman Torres, well, they do. I share Councilwoman Torres' concerns about upzoning in absence of a development plan. I worry very much in the NPI that's going to start in my district, the College View neighborhood. Very low density, keep high community of color, low income, large lots. They are ground zero to be gone in 10 years if we don't get this right. And the people who, that, who live there are very concerned. Everywhere where we've added density, we've added unaffordability. People are moving to Southwest Denver as part of one of the last places in the city they can still afford a home where a kid's got a yard. So this, this is very much on my mind. On the commitments for rezoning, who down the road, when the developer is out, things finished? Who is responsible, what entity is responsible for keeping those commitments at 15 and 20 years old? Who's buying the eco passes? Is it the individual homeowners who buy condo units or townhomes? Is it the HOA? I, I think we really need to flush this out some more before I'd be comfortable.
We have something to say?
I do think CP has heard this from me a lot, so I'll spare you all again. But I do think it's really important for us to talk about the, the true fact that displacement in our neighborhoods is not coming from these small, you know, units going to 25 units. Like Councilmember Torres said, it's so weird to call you that. These displacement, displacement in our community is coming from a scrape of a $500,000 attainable home and building two-unit or, you know, two, $2 million duplexes or 10 row homes. That's where our displacement problem in the city of Denver is coming from. And the EHA actually doesn't deal with that. And it's a request I have been making over and over and over again for four years, five years now, that we run an EHA-like process, but we do a one-for-one swap, we replace. If you're a developer and you're going to build six duplexes on what is now a $700,000 single-family home, fine. But one of those duplexes needs to be the cost that you purchased that land for, that, to maintain that affordability. And it is something that no matter how many different criteria we look at when it comes to rezoning and how much equity criteria we look at, it's not going to solve the problem. There has to be a policy on the ground that says that that may, that we are maintaining that affordability in the two to nine unit category, because that's where the gentrification is actually happening in our city. And so I just wanted to put that out there because I think this is all really valuable and I, I'm okay with this and I think we move forward with it. I'm not sure it's ready for primetime for community reflection yet, but I don't think this actually gets us where we need to go. Where we need to go is to solve the displacement problem in the two to nine unit category. That's all.
Thank you. We have three people in the queue, and I'll pick one.
Yeah, really quickly, I agree with some of the comments that speak to why some of these community benefit don't really belong with the rezoning. I think the criteria that you're looking at are very similar to criteria for LDR. And maybe we need to expand the criteria for LDR and look at these kind of impactful developments from that lens as opposed to tying it to rezoning. It really built this into a process. So LDR is more than just infrastructure plan, but it really becomes this framework for development of impactful developments. And however we decide to define impactful developments, we can, I think this is a great start. And then that LDR process really informs how the community engages and when the community benefit is signed and what belongs in the community benefit versus development agreement. So it's actually recorded and tied to a land. And so just some thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Catherine.
So I had the chance to see some of these slides in the Advanced Equity and Rezoning Task Force. I've already seen progress with some of the questions that came up there. So thank you for continuing to work on it. I assume your reference to around seven to 11 rezonings a year or 10%. A lot of the questions were, how do we know that that's what these are? Is that kind of based on data now or we're still, yeah?
Based on data from the last five years, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Because I know that was a big question of, are we actually capturing, or we think we're capturing? Goja, thank you. That was one of the questions. How does this overlap with LDR? Are we, are these properties, projects, rezonings going through LDR and then going through this? Or how do you hold those together? And then I think on your slide on running with the property, you know, I echo the concern that I think we're kind of trying to push some things into rezoning that maybe happened at time of development. But I think the concepts are important and right. I just think there is a lot more work to be done here. And I know we were talking about more meetings or more time. I feel a lot more comfortable on the first question of the rezoning criteria. I think this one is not ready for primetime with the public. I think there are a lot of questions on how do we implement this? What are the important things we're looking for? I think you're, it continues to improve and grow, but I, I just think that if we take that to the public, there's going to be a lot of questions without answers right now. So more time with the task force, more time with us. I'm not sure what it is, but thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to close this out here. I keep thinking about this project in council, council person, district. I keep saying, because it didn't seem to keep calling your council, right? Office 17 million, and it had development rights. And it's using the general building form. And I have the concern about putting it at the time of development, because not all developers are authentic. Not all developers actually want to do really good community outreach. Not all developers even answer their emails. And so to put that on the timeless development feels really easy to me and not consistent. And there's no language that is a trigger for you to have to reach out to community at the time of development. Here, you have these by rights. And once you have it in our district, you have these. So we had to open up a whole new project to figure out how it goes at the time of development. Teaching people about development is really hard because you can use all these uses. You have all these forms, you have all these building forms, and it's super complicated. And so I have some really great developers in my neighborhood who I would trust at the time of development. And I have some really developers who I'd be like, oh no, that's really not the appropriate time because there is a community process built into the rezoning. I also think that we need more work on the second part of this because I keep thinking about LDR as well. I know you guys have been like a start with a bone, this is height going to height. So you taught a lot of it for me. But I also think that these acreages, like when you're in a landlocked city, it just is so hard for me to think about acreage. And I would just have an area, a question, area vulnerable to displacement. My whole council district has been displaced and gentrified. So I wouldn't hit that criteria. I mean, we need, we need to rethink about like areas that, and what's that criteria vulnerable to displacement even mean? But like I, all the lovely ones and people who haven't found a district one, a huge proportion of them. But we actually need to stop that. And we, how, and what's the trigger that is vulnerable to displacement? How do you, how do you put that on a metric? Like how do you, what, what triggers that term? So I would just say that I also think that, I know I just said we probably don't need more meetings, but I think we need, this second part needs to be hashed out a little bit more. Because if I send this to my council district, there's been several of these zonings that on the corner of 38th and Perry, it would hit, it would make, make one of these criteria and we really want to get at those. And to Council, Councilmember Torres's point, we have done a whole analysis on the West Area Plan, and it is the gentrification that's happening from single-family homes into RH 2.5. It is, and EHA is not addressing these six. And this doesn't address it, may be vulnerable to displacement, but that's, that's all I have. Well, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. It's worth it, our best meeting.
Clarifying question for y'all. I didn't want to long this because I was pretty simply. Industrial areas transitioned to residential. You did a one acreable question on residential, or mixed use. Where I see in mine, it is, where I would like to see that. That's basically industrial residential, kind of mixed use is, is, I like the mix. So I, I'm not sure. I don't understand. That's why I'm getting ahead of D9. Yes. Yeah.
And then a lot of times what happens is the rezoning.
Oh, that's, that's helpful. That's, I was trying to. Yeah, for me, for, for D9, it is, as number three is written on the left. Because it's a mixed use, it's something we want. Okay. Thanks, guys. This is very helpful. There is the type of, my.
Thank you.